Okay, it's 6:30. We're gonna bring this council meeting of Long Island City Council to order. Thank everyone for coming. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please. Madam, city clerk.
All right, good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman-Gorman here. Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam. I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tem Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Pastor Matthews Harbison, gonna lead us in a word of inspirations from Long Island Wesley's Church.
Gentlemen, remove your hats and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening. I'm reminded of French philosopher Jean Baptiste Rousseau, and he said, "As soon as public service ceases to be a chief business of the citizens, they would rather serve with their money than with their persons. The state is not far at all." And I'd like us to take a moment as we thank for these civil servants who are here today. Oh, great God, we thank you for the men and women who are here, who have given of their time, who have given of their lives to serve this community. We pray for those who serve in the position of great responsibility, and even for those of lesser responsibilities. We ask God that you would be merciful to our great land and to those who lead us in our communities, our cities, and even on the state and national levels. Give to each a sense of calling. May each put a high value on justice, righteousness, honesty, and service. May all have be of pure heart, and peace, and joy of knowing that they have taken the high road. Oh, God, no one said it would be easy, and no one said it was going to be this hard. But may the day come when we can all say, "Praise God, we have come this far." Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Harbison, for those words of inspiration. Thank you for being here tonight. Let's continue our agenda. Let's have a presentation from the California Department of Insurance. Are they here? Okay. A presentation on the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. Low Cost Auto Insurance Program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, and Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Arminia Sarkson. I'm an outreach analyst with the California Department of Insurance, and I'm here tonight to talk to you, first and foremost, about who we are as a department, because we realize a lot of people have never heard of the Department of Insurance. And secondly, to discuss very briefly the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. Oh, there you go. Thank you so much. So the Department of Insurance is a state agency, and our responsibility is to regulate insurance. We regulate all lines of insurance, auto, homeowners, earthquake, life insurance, just to name a few. And we're responsible in making sure that we, insurance companies are compliant, they do not overcharge you for your policies. We license agents and brokers, and we ensure that any time you, as a consumer, experience issues with your insurance, again, any type of insurance policy, you can reach out to us. The phone number to reach our hotline is 800-927-4357, or you may reach us on insurance.ca.gov online. So our hotline is actually answered Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We speak multiple languages, and it's answered by experts who can assist you not only to understand your policy, but also to help you file a claim should you suspect fraud. So in terms of auto insurance, as you all know, in California, if you drive on California's roadways, you must carry proof of financial responsibility, which means you need to carry liability insurance. And there are penalties if you are caught driving without auto insurance. And realizing, back in 1999, the California State Legislature actually created a program, a low-cost auto insurance program, because the state legislature realized that there are a lot of individuals who drive without auto insurance, without valid auto insurance. So also realizing how expensive auto insurance is, the state legislature took upon itself to create this program, the CLCA program, to offer affordable, low-cost liability insurance to those who meet certain criterias. And I will discuss that in this slide. So first, you need to have a valid driver's license or an AB-60 license. Also, your vehicle cannot be valued over $25,000 or be financed. You must meet certain income guidelines, which I will discuss in the next slide. Be at least of age of 16, and be a good driver, which means in the last three years, you cannot have had an asphalt auto accident or have more than one point on your driving record. In terms of who qualifies, it's really based on your income and the state, the county where you reside within the state. So for example, I don't know if you can see it very well, but in terms of your income eligibility, there's a chart right next to the map. Let's say you are a household of four, and that also includes dependents. Your annual income cannot exceed $69,375. And this is based on federal guidelines, poverty guidelines. It resets every year in May. And in terms of how much you would pay for your annual auto liability insurance, it really is based on where we reside in the state. So LA County is number five on that annual liability premium chart. So if you are a good driver with a good driving record for over three years, over the age of 24, you will only pay $483 for liability insurance under the CLCA program. That number does increase based on your age, number of years that you've been driving. But the most that you will pay in LA County under this program is $966. To apply, you would need to first have a valid driver's license or an AB-60 license, valid car registration, proof of income, and a down payment of at least 20% of that annual premium. So if you qualify for, let's say, the $483, you would just need to have $96.60 upfront. As I mentioned, proof of income, it could be any type of document that shows how much you earn annually, and some people, we realize, are not working. So it could just be, let's say, an SSI statement, for example. The full list of what qualifies as proof of income is available on the CLCA website, which is mylowcostauto.com. And to apply for this program, 100% of the application is online. Visit mylowcostauto.com. First, take an eligibility questionnaire. It's only seven questions. The system will then determine whether or not you qualify for this program. And should you qualify, it will prompt you to the application. Fill it out, submit it. The next business day, you should hear from an agent, a licensed insurance agent, who will collect your documents, collect your payment, and be able to bind a new auto policy for you. There is a chat feature available on the website, on the CLCA website, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You could chat with someone in English or Spanish, or you could also call between those hours, 866-602-8861. And lastly, I'll just leave you with the website again for the CLCA program, the phone number, as well as the Department of Insurance phone number and website. And please do not hesitate to call us, to make presentations in the future in terms of any insurance-related topic. We would be more than happy to be of help to the city of Longdale. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for that presentation. This is great information. Definitely information that is needed in the community throughout the state. Let's see if anyone have any questions of this report. We are posted to make it available.
I actually do. What if you don't have a personal car, but you're driving a property or another person's car, like my car? Could you get insurance so that it covers whatever car I'm driving?
I believe so. I'm not too familiar with being added on as a driver when the car is already insured under somebody's car. However, you can chat with someone at the CLCA program who will know specifically the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, let's have a drought update. Let's hear from the West Basin Water District. Yeah, they're on here. For some reason, they're coming up.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and of course, members of this city council here. My name is E.J. Caldwell. I currently serve as the manager of Water Policy and Resource Development at West Basin Municipal Water District, which is the water wholesaler for this entire region. I do have a brief presentation. I'll move through it fairly quickly, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. So just a little bit about West Basin. Our mission is to provide a safe and reliable supply of high-quality water to the communities that we serve. This is why we were created by a vote of the public, to bring imported water. And of course, we supplemented and augmented that with the use of recycled water as well. Most of you are aware that West Basin is governed by four elected board members. Of course, we have our board president, Director Don Deere, who represents the city of Longdale and the surrounding areas. We do have two of our directors that also represent West Basin Municipal Water District at the Metropolitan Water District, which of course is the largest water agency in the country. And of course, that is Director Gloria Gray, who serves as the chairwoman of Metropolitan Water District, and Director Harold Williams. So one thing that makes West Basin extremely unique is just the diversity of the communities that we serve. It's very difficult, I think, as far as planning goes, to provide adequate water supplies and meet the needs of the entire communities. We have 17 cities. You can see as far as north is Malibu, all the way down to the Palos Verdes Peninsula. As far east is Carson, and then all the way up, you can see a little bit of West Hollywood. And the reason I think that that makes it challenging and yet fun is actually learning and getting involved in the communities, because each community has different needs, whether it's more density as far as your land use or more open space. Trying to find programs that meet the specific needs of those communities is something that I think is near and dear to everyone's heart at West Basin. And at the end of this presentation, I'll highlight a couple of programs that we think would be very successful for the city of Longdale. I did want to highlight this. We are very lucky to have Greg Reed. He's the newly appointed general manager to West Basin Municipal Water District. He's a professional civil engineer. Previously was the assistant director at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And he's a former member of the West Basin Water Association. He unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm here in his place. But I did want to highlight that because he's extremely active in our community. Grew up in the Carson area and really has gotten to know, and you'll see him around, I would say, with some regularity. And I would encourage all of you to take the time, say hi to him, because he'll chat your ear off. He loves talking about water, and he loves talking about these communities. So the reason I'm here today is to talk a little bit about the drought, but I'm gonna hit you with some hard facts, but then I'm also gonna pat you on the back, because I want you to know exactly what the city of Longdale has been able to achieve. And we'll talk a little bit about what more we can achieve. So yes, California is in a third straight year of drought. According to the U.S. Drought Monitor, 95% of California is in a drought. And I bring this up because it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Most of us had the opportunity in California to maybe either experience or see the snow. I think in December, we had a great snowpack, and it was really exciting. People got excited about what the water year might bring. And then we were hit with severe drought. We had the driest January, February, and March on record, and things have not let up. We do anticipate significant dry weather concluding all the way through the summer and into the fall. And of course, that brings about fire harm throughout the state of California. You can see here that along the Colorado River, which continues to make national headlines, we are at an all-time low, and that will trigger significant shortages throughout the west. So this is just some of the headlines that you've seen throughout the past several months. And I just want to highlight this because I know the city of Longdale is extremely engaged within their communities, making sure that people understand that California is in a drought. We do need to make conservation a California way of life. But again, I want everybody to know that it's not all negative. We have made tremendous strides and actually achieved, I would say, great things here in the South Bay that really need to be highlighted. And then, of course, getting that message that what we're doing is working allows you to say, okay, well, what can we do that might push us over that next hump? So California has been very responsive to the current drought that we're in. You can see that in July of 2021, the governor called for a 15% voluntary water conservation reduction. In October of that year, the drought emergencies were declared in all 58 counties of California. You can see there in December, the initial 2022 state water project allocation of 0% was revised to 5%, so we got that positive message there. But then, of course, March of 2022, the governor did sign an executive order calling for the State Water Resources Control Board to adopt emergency regulations. And I want to highlight those here for you, because a lot of people have a lot of questions. It requires that urban water suppliers, like West Basin Municipal Water District, to implement at a minimum all demand reduction actions identified under a Level 2 of your water shortages contingency plan. So what does that mean? That means throughout the state, anybody, any agency will be calling for at least a minimum of a 20% reduction. And then, secondly, it prohibits the irrigation of non-functional ornamental turf with potable water in the commercial, industrial, and institutional sector. And for those of you that kind of look at this, commercial is pretty easy to understand, industrial is fairly easy to understand, institutional, those are municipalities and our school districts. So if you have what you call ornamental turf, you should cease watering that water with potable water at this time. And I would just point that out. A lot of people ask me, I get it, the question all the time, well, what is ornamental turf or non-functional? And the easiest way to describe it is if you don't see yourself sitting down to picnic on it, you don't have your dog playing on it, or you don't have your children playing a sport on it, it's probably non-functional or ornamental turf. So we'd like to see the city work with West Basin Municipal Water District to really promote this, educate people, because we see and we find every day that people want to do the right thing. They just want to understand exactly what the expectations are. So we can work with you and get this message out to our communities. Statewide prohibitions on wasteful water uses. And you hear the term "make conservation a California way of life", and every time we're in a drought, the state board adopts these prohibitions on wasteful uses of water. And what I like to tell people is that when we make conservation a California way of life, these prohibitions will never be, need to be made again, because they are wasteful uses of water. You can see the outdoor watering that allows water to run on either sidewalks and into the streets. That is a wasteful use of water. Washing vehicles without an automatic shut-off nozzle. West Basin gives those out for free, especially if you see us out in the community at an event. You can usually get a free one there. Washing hard surfaces like driveways and sidewalks that don't absorb water. Street cleaning, construction site preparation, we can work with you and your community with that. Filling decorative fountains that do not utilize recirculation. And of course, outdoor watering within 48 hours after it rains. Now, we don't see a lot of rain right now. We hope to see some. But when it does, it's very important to make sure that we turn off our sprinklers. And then, of course, you see that the watering of ornamental turf on public mediums should be stopped at this time. So what is West Basin doing? We've adopted our Super Califrag realistic program. We enjoy working with our communities to kind of get this message out there about fun ways to begin to conserve water and use less. We have moved to a stage level three on our water shortages contingency plan. So we are working with our communities to get that 21% to 30% reduction. And I bring that up because we did that for a very specific reason. Here in the South Bay, we have the city of Los Angeles just to our east. And then if you actually go up north above the West Basin Service Area, you have an agency called Los Vergenes Municipal Water District. And they are what is called a state water project dependent area. And because of the water supply that comes down from Northern California versus the Colorado River, those areas are on a very significant steep reduction that's mandated by Metropolitan Water District. And we couldn't in good conscience watch that happen without us doing the same thing or working on the same common goals. West Basin benefits from an operational shift. We usually receive water from the state water project, but right now, we're receiving 100% Colorado River water. So we're not impacted by that decision. But because of all of our neighbors around us having to do that, what we're gonna try to do is get to that 30% reduction. So West Basin is asking all of our communities to reduce up to 30%. We're asking our communities to adopt a uniform, two-day-per-week outdoor watering. This mirrors what's taking place in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding areas. We're asking our communities to remove municipal ornamental turf to set an example. And I mentioned this before, the colorful imaging that was in the previous slide. We'd love to coordinate with you on advertising efforts. Anything, any outdoor signage where we can actually provide it, we can tailor it to your city to make sure that people are aware of the current drought crisis. Anything that we can do to help you out, we would be happy to do. Now for the good news. You can see, I know this is a little bit wonky, but I put this in here because I wanted to make sure that the residents and commercial businesses in the city of Longdale know specifically the great work that you've been able to achieve. You can see there that that bar chart is your water demand dating back all the way to 2000. And here we are in 2022. It is the lowest it's ever been. New technology is out there, so all of those old water waste and toilets are all being removed. We are planting more drought-tolerant landscaping, so we're looking good there. People are more aware about wasteful uses of water, like I said, washing the car without those nozzles. So we're seeing a significant success story here, and I wanted to highlight that. What we want to do is bring programs to your community now that can make that little extra difference. This is just more of the same, kind of showing where Golden State Water Company Southwest is doing and how you compare with all of our other communities. And then I just wanted to focus in really quickly. West Basin right now, through Metropolitan Water District, is offering up to $4 per square foot for municipal grass replacement. There's a chance it'll go up to $5, and I don't think you'll ever see it higher than $5. But West Basin took this program, and we ramped it up a little bit more. We actually have landscape design. We've been meeting with your staff to discuss these opportunities. We are happy to help you design new landscapes that utilize native landscaping and really showcases that to all of your communities, what it can look like when time and money is invested in it. Residents aren't left out either. We have a great program right now. It's up to $3, or it's little as $3 per square foot. We do have a grass replacement plus program that offers a couple of other amenities. We offer free rain barrels every year, so we'll be doing that again this year. And we offer weather-based irrigation systems. So when I mention turning off your sprinklers when it rains, we actually give away free smart controllers so that people don't have to do that. Their controller will actually know that it has rained and won't turn on your sprinklers. And there's nothing easier than that, than allowing technology to just do what it's there to do. We have a new program right now with SoCal Gas. They'll actually come to your residents. They'll actually walk through and show you what you can do to explore ways to conserve energy, gas, and water. And of course, as part of that, they're offering free toilets and free devices to help you do that. So when they see those larger-using toilets, they'll actually install them free for you. So you don't really have to do much of anything. And then, again, I always point this out because we find that in our communities, that once people know what's expected of them and what they can do, we always see that residents and commercial businesses want to do the right thing. And so we have extensive programs to teach people about water. I recognize most of you, and I know that you've been to our water recycling facility. I know that you've seen us out in the public and actually just installed a water bottle filling station, so we were there for the photograph of that. We have all of these programs to really teach and educate people about programs that we offer. And so I would encourage everybody to go to West Basin's website, www.westbasin.org, and learn more about what you can learn. And then, this is my personal contact information. Now, I live here in the South Bay. I love these communities. You'll see me regularly at your community events. But this is my email address, so don't be shy. Feel free to email me, contact me, and if there's anything that we can do for your community, we will do that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Caldwell. We go back a long ways. I want to thank you for your presence and for working with West Basin for all these years. We do have a couple of questions, I'm sure, from the council. Let's start with Councilwoman Suarez.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. So I'm trying to make sure that I formulate the question correctly. I'm not an expert in this field, however, with regards to the drought-tolerant landscaping. So we had a family friend who worked nursery. She did kind of landscaping design. You know, knew a lot about plants and whatnot. And she had made the comment one time that if you have plants, it helps attract more rainfall. Something to that effect of the natural balance of the ecosystem and how plants attract sunlight and the precipitation and all of that. And so I guess my question would be is, has there been any studies? Or have, I know we're concerned with the immediate and the situation we're in, and we're trying to make cutbacks, but has there been any studies with regards to how perhaps removing more and more plant life and going more drought can, in effect, end up in the long term leading to less rainfall? And I don't know if that's something that's being studied.
It doesn't necessarily lead to less rainfall. What it does do is it attracts the rain. And I know that there's a balance in that comment, but when it rains on your yard, what you want is that water to stay on your yard. And ultimately, when you have grass, grass grows at the very top. There's a dense clay layer. And when it rains, and if you get a good hard rain, it's just gonna wash right off your property. It doesn't really soak into the ground. But if you utilize native landscaping and creative designs to actually keep that water on your property, then it doesn't go into the street, then it doesn't go into the storm drain, and then it doesn't go out into our ocean. So that's your ultimate goal, is to utilize different technologies and different landscaping designs to keep that water on your property. And I think that that's what they're referring to. It's not so much that it reduces the amount of rain kind of in our environment, because that's the hydrologic cycle that we live close to the ocean. You can kind of feel the humidity. But what you want to do is make the most of every drop of that rain. And I will tell you, I was just at a, I was speaking at an event in Malibu, and somebody brought up the fact that they said, "If I cleared out all of my plants, my native landscaping, I'm gonna be more susceptible to fire." And I got really nervous, because I don't want anybody's house to catch on fire. And I was lucky enough to have an LA County Fire Chief said, "That's not correct." Said, "If you clear your property and you plant native landscaping and you keep that moisture on your property, you'll actually reduce the risk of fire." And I saluted him, and I said, "Thank you," because it made that point of maybe utilizing the best technologies to kind of keep and make use of every drop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one quick question. You mentioned about your free professional design assistance. Is that for just cities, or can residents take advantage of that?
So we do have a grass replacement plus program. You can go to our website and apply for that. It's primarily for specific zones in our service area. So they utilize that in viro screen 4.0 to find communities that are impacted by the environment, pollution, all these different factors. So we do have that grass replacement plus program. And then, of course, it is available for municipalities. And I know that we have actually met with your staff. Your staff has been extremely helpful as far as identifying opportunities. And we're here, we're willing to make it happen.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that report. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir. Okay, let's hear from our Sheriff Department, Public Safety Report. Let's hear from our captain. Followed by the Fire Department will also give a report.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's Monica Patel again, acting captain at South LA. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for July 18th through August 1st. Okay, so we'll start with July 30th at approximately 05:44 hours. Deputy Gomez contacted a suspect regarding a vandalism investigation at Fermona and Manhattan Beach. Beach Boulevard. The suspect admitted to the deputy that he had narcotics on his person, and the suspect was detained pending a narcotics investigation. A search of his person and property was conducted, and during the search, several different types of narcotics were found, including a white crystal-like substance resembling methamphetamine, a white powdery substance resembling cocaine, black tar-like heroin, or a substance resembling black tar heroin, and numerous pills resembling prescribed medication. In addition, empty packaging items commonly used to package and sell narcotics, a scale commonly used to say, to act, to measure accurate amounts of narcotics, and a piece of paper indicating sales and prices of narcotics per gram were in the suspect's property. So, that was on July 30th. The following day, at approximately 0700 hours, Deputies Gonzalez and Letitia contacted three suspects regarding a vandalism investigation at 15013 Lamoli Avenue. During the investigation, it was discovered that the suspect, the suspects had a firearm, and in fact, they tossed it, and were spray painting Sorenios 13 on multiple walls in the area. It is believed that these particular suspects could be involved in numerous vandalisms within the city. Detectives in Longdale are continuing to work this particular investigation. This concludes my report for the week. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions of this year? Who's the young man next to you, Lieutenant?
Okay. I'd like to segue into this. So, this will be, this is Jose Salgado. He's a newly assigned lieutenant to South Los Angeles Station, and will, he will be assisting me in serving your needs, the best that he's able. So, I'd like to introduce you to him.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
And he'll be available on, on evening shift, so primarily PMs, okay? If you ever need any more, then welcome to call the station, talk to me, or ask for him.
Absolutely. Thank.
Do you happen to have anyone?
As soon as I get home. All right, we appreciate that. Welcome.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Let's hear from our LA County Fire Department Battalion Chief, Martin. Give me your last name, is it?
Maher.
Maher, Maher, silent H, okay. I wasn't sure if you pronounced the H or not.
Good evening, Mayor. And members of the City Council. I'm here on behalf of Assistant Chief Brian Bennett. He's the Assistant Chief for this, the region. I'm the Battalion Chief, Martin Maher, for Battalion 18, which covers the city of Longdale. I'm just going to give you a quick rundown on basically the incidents for July. We had fire, five fires in the, within the city, and we responded to 145 rescue and emergency medicals. We also responded to one service call, which was some sort of assist. It could, not necessarily a public assist, but it could be any sort of service call. We had 42 good intent calls, and these can vary from 911 hangups to various alarms that we'll get that may or may not turn into anything. A lot of the information may, may or may not be known. And responded to two special incident types, such as alarm or smoke investigation. That's all I really have for the month of July. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the safety report from the LA County Fire Department? Battalion Chief Maher, thank you, sir. All right. All right, and let's have some public comments. Public comments, you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to the City Council on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. When it becomes your turn, if you just approach the podium, if you can start with your name. First, we appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up.
Mary Adams. I'm here again to speak to the ongoing problems at RJ's and related to RJ's. There was a temporary repair made to the sidewalk on the trip-and-fall hazard, which is in, totally inadequate, but the city has given a mandate to RJ's to correct the destroyed driveway pan, gutter, and the flatware on their, flatwork on their actual property. That's all good. What's not good is that this is the perfect opportunity for the city to correct the wrong that's been ongoing for many years, decades as a matter of fact. Erroniously, the city looked the other way, it appears to me at least, when the previous owner deferred illegally, removed the residential properties on facing Manzel and Gravilla. Subsequently, he paved over those lots 100% pavement with, as best I can determine for the city, there are no records or ever any permits of any kind taken out. And as a consequence of that, there are driveway gates across the entire residential lot on Gravilla and Manzel. This has encouraged the illegal operation of heavy semi-tractor trailer rigs, which are forbidden by city ordinance to be on residential streets, which routinely are on residential streets. Now, the position, as I understand it, that the city took was, "Oh, well, we have to do this because the commercial lots of RJ's which face Manhattan Beach Boulevard, we have to allow this for their business." That is erroneous, that is false, that is totally wrong. Look at the original city overlay map, and you'll see that the commercial lots facing Manhattan Beach Boulevard never had any access to the back of their lots. This is an illegal accommodation by the city, and it needs to be fixed. And we had an illustrious congressman last fall that stated that it is moral and legal obligation of a city when they recognize a wrong to correct it. He was referring to the atrocity that occurred in Hermosa Beach. So, in evidence that there is no permit and the concrete that was placed is totally inadequate, all you have to do is look at it. It's falling apart. So, obviously, it was never designed or constructed for the kind of traffic that it has on it, which the traffic, in my opinion, is totally illegal to begin with. But again, there's no permit, shoddy workmanship, inadequate construction, and I would ask the City Council to direct the appropriate city officials to correct this wrong. The driveway, driveway pan should be restricted to that which is allowed for a maximum driveway width for residential properties, which may be 16, 18 feet. I could not get a straight answer on that. But currently, the gate on Manzel is about 48 to 50 feet long, grossly, grossly, grossly in violation of
Time is expired.
And the ordinance of the time that it was illegally established. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, city of Longdale. My name is Noe Reinaga. I'm with RJ's Construction Supplies, the General Manager. Thank you for having us here. Just a quick, quick update on RJ's. We finally complied to all the adjustments that we had to make regarding the outside It did cost us a lot of money. It's costing us a lot of business because of the storage situation. We had complied to everything that you guys have addressed, and I received an email that we're in compliance. A couple of weeks ago, we received an email regarding our sidewalk and our driveway that wasn't part of the list, but at the same time, it's very, I have pictures, I have pictures of other driveways in the city of Longdale that I feel that we're being harassed. Every movement that we do is pointing on RJ's only. There's other, other driveways that are very damaged, and it seems like we are looked at, fingered at, or whatever the situation might be. So, I just wanted to express my feeling, and I need your help. You know, we're, we're always available to pick up the phone. We're always answering any questions, any concerns, and we're here to comply, but it seems like we finish one section, we comply, and then we have other issues. And it's an ongoing thing that keeps on happening, and it's really affecting our business. I'm very emotional, I'm very upset of the situation, but I feel harassed. That's how we feel. Thank you very much. I can answer any questions later on today or any other time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am, good evening.
I just wanted to say, I was disappointed with a special meeting with LASD and the City Council. Only two residents showed up to speak out about the failure with the sheriff's suppressant plan. We spoke first, and the acting captain got up to speak. I counted five sheriffs there total. We could have had more to say, but we weren't allowed to engage or interact once we spoke. I could understand if the place was full, but there was just the two of us. It's too bad they don't want to hear our concerns and talk to us. Not one would speak to us or try to get together with us after the meeting regarding our concerns. The meeting lasted a half hour. What a joke. It's always the same on the safety report also. Two traffic stops with parolees and guns or drugs were found, although tonight was nice because it was just, probably just a regular person stop with some vandalism, which led to more drugs than a gun or what have you, which is great. They are doing their job. Do these parolees live in Longdale and other, or other cities or just driving through? When was the last time the sheriffs did a sex registering check to see if they are compliant? I'm referring to Megan's Law or an arson registrant. There are, there has to be more to the sheriff's safety report than these traffic stops. More graffiti is popping up around the city, so is there a gang issue? Keep the residents informed, and not just one night in August. And a shout out to the house party that the one deputy talked about, where he said there was 80 people at a house party on the 4th of July. I don't know where they parked, so good for them. You want to get rid of two crosswalks, I understand, to save money. What about the safety of the children's sake? People drive so crazy, and no one stops if they hit you either. I think we need the crossing guards for the elementary school kids. Also, coyote sightings have been up lately also. We lost a cat on my block and another a block over. Maybe more flyers can be made and passed out, education on this matter, and what we can try to do to make this work. Coyotes are all around us now. Most South Bay cities are having problems in sightings. Maybe we can get together with the other South Bay cities and try to come up with a solution, something. There was a lot of pushback also on Nextdoor on the, and I get it, coyotes are all over the place, not a whole lot, you know, but maybe we could work together with some other cities and what they're trying to do. Also, late-night water runoff for Hawthorne Boulevard was told to me, I don't know exactly what time, but it's late night whenever the sprinklers go on Hawthorne Boulevard, so a lot of water waste flow on Hawthorne. I can find out maybe a better time for you guys if somebody wanted to check that out. I don't know. Also, I want to give a shout out to Officer Black. I believe he's a CSO. He helped me with an issue on Sunday, was so nice, and so I do want to give a shout out and tell him thank you and let you guys all know, Officer Black.
Thank you.
statistics tell us that the pedestrian fatality rate in California is almost 25% higher than the national average. Statistics also tell us that pedestrians most at risk are children. Children 14 and under accounted for a significant proportion of pedestrian accident deaths. Did any of you do the research before deciding to remove crossing guards from the streets of Longdale, or was it strictly monetary? Work in Paris in the city do not have the luxury of being able to pick up their children after school. Under California Civil Jury Instruction 412, there is a duty of care owed children. The laws of the state of California require that adults anticipate the ordinary behavior of children and be more careful in dealing with children than with adults. Did anyone consider the number of distracted or aggressive drivers on the road, or the lack of visibility when an SUV cannot see a child crossing in front of the vehicle? In September 2021, a 78-year-old woman picking up her grandson from school lost control of her SUV and accelerated into a crosswalk. 45-year-old crossing guard Ashley Diaz responded by pushing a child out of the path. Unfortunately, Mr. Diaz lost his life protecting his Lafayette resident. In March 16th, 2022, a driver in a 2020 Range Rover hit a woman and two young children in a crosswalk near Riverside School, killing the woman and one of the children. On January 25th, 2021, four-year-old Alyssa Fajardo was holding her mother's hand in a crosswalk while walking to school in Koreatown. Sunday, a left-turning driver hit Erica Fajardo, the mother, tossing her off this crosswalk and out of her shoes. Alyssa was found a few yards away and not breathing. EMTs arrived and take, took her to Children's Hospital. A medical team is ready when Alyssa arrives, but her skull is fractured and the trauma to her brain is too severe. They can't save this four-year-old, who was walking to a crosswalk hand-in-hand with her mother. My friend used to come and rail against your excuses that certain actions were for the children. Which one do you support for the children, then? The state says there is duty of care to anticipate the ordinary behavior, behavior of children to keep them from harm. Don't crossing guards do that. Some have given their life for that. Your number of studies and excuses for taking away crossing guards will mean nothing if a child is killed by your actions. Don't delude yourself that a child could survive an impact with an SUV. Alyssa Fajardo is proof of that. Will schools and families near the two crosswalks being cut be notified prior to the school year? The last thing you want is parents sending their kids to school, assuming they'll have a crossing guard present.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. First off, I want to start off with thanking Sean and Jared today. They actually met with me to help me move forward on my project plan. So, I do want to thank you guys for that. My wife and I really appreciate it. And another thing is that the crosswalking decision is, I think, very critical to revise and rethink because people do drive dangerously here. I brought my son here today purposely. He's sitting over there, he attends William Green Elementary, and I wanted you guys to look at him, because I think those are, that's one of the blocks that you guys are cutting off. That's the route we take, when we, when we pick up on a bike, we take that home, and people just drive by, they're very distracted, and people are just unaware with the crosswalk guy. At least someone's going to be there and help guide and catch people's attention, knowing that someone's there. So, I think it's very crucial that you guys reconsider that. And I just want to bring up that Murphy's been involved in, in our case, and if we have extra money to burn, which has been in the case of mine, that has nothing to do with Murphy or any litigation towards me, then I think we should have the money to have a crosswalking guard. So, I think you guys were talking about taking away three, and then you guys originally started off with two, and I think we should have all our crosswalking guards available to the community in our city to protect our kids. Like I said, there's not a price that you could put on their life. They're, they're, you can't bring it back. Having crosswalking guy is very important. This leads to my next segment off, one, I live on 160th between Freeman and Hawthorne Boulevard. It's right off the Hawthorne exiting of, the exiting of the 405 freeway. We get a lot of high-speedway traffic going down that street, and I brought it up to, to city officials years ago, and we still haven't received any speed bumps. I, I believe that we should look into this again and see if we could issue any speed bumps on our, speed blocks on our block to reduce the speed that's going down the street. If you guys go there at any given time, you guys will see that how fast these cars are going. They're, they're at least reaching 65 to 80 miles per hour speeding down our streets because it's a long stretch, stretch without any stop signs. And then, the last thing I'd like to announce is that, that I have completed all my filings and submitted for City Councilman, and I hope to join you guys, and I want our community to know that my name's Samuel Cruz, and I want you guys to go out, register to vote if you're not, not registered.
Wait, 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 wait a minute.
Time's expired.
Council meetings.
No? Okay.
Yes, yes, policy. Most councils, the policies, most cities.
Well, that's it, just vote in November.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Pina from Longdale Library, just here to give you some library updates. This week, we will be wrapping up with our lunch at the library, so Friday will be the last day that we'll be offering free lunches for children up to 18, 18 and under. We're also going to be starting to wrap up with our summer discovery program, so we invite everybody else who hasn't had the chance to come into the library and register to come in and do so to earn some prizes and have fun reading. We're going to start with our summer reading, not the summer reading, Smarty Pants Storytime on Thursdays, August 18th and 25th, from 10:30 to 11:00 AM. And this is a good opportunity to have your toddler get, getting ready, for school readiness. We will be having another program Thursday, August 11th, from 3:30 to 4:30. The title is Stories Around the World, and this is a paid program that's coming from our headquarters, so it is limited seating, so if you can register on online, go to our website and register for that program. And it's for ages 5 to 12. We're also offering Little Sprouts Growing Grates, which is going to be every Friday, starting this Friday, from 2:00 to 3:00. And we want to empower children to make healthy food choices through hands-on science and gardening education. This is for ages 5 to 12. For teens, we are going to be having our monthly teen advisory board meetings, which is always the, usually the last Thursday of the month. So we want to invite all teens to come and help shape the future of activities and collection at Longdale Library. And lastly, want to invite adults to join our book club. Our next book club will be Thursday, August 11th from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close public comments and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilman Pat Kearney.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody that came out to speak tonight. Noe, where is he? Did he go somewhere? Can we have the pictures up here from the other driveways? He has photos up. Can we get those from City Clerk? And then Sam, the speed bumps. I'm going to tell the way I was told many years ago, the best way to get speed bumps is walk your neighborhood, get signatures, and make it a formal letter and present it to the city manager and it goes before the traffic committee. I know I've worked with some people in Hawthorne and did it that way. I think it's the way it works here. And Ms. Librarian, thank you for your library events update. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Councilwoman.
No. Thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. I did want to get, I would like to really see a resolution with regards to R J's and, you know, what we're working through. I don't want it to be where we're putting undue burden. From what I understood, I thought the violations had been cleared. I know the sidewalk was a separate issue that came up, but I would really like to see, I mean, they've come forward and asked to work through it. So I really would like to see a resolution, something we can work out. And then I will point on a few things from our resident, Deana. I do know with regards to, I'll pick on the coyote one because I know we spoke about that at the last meeting. And I do remember at a, I do sit on the South Bay Cities Council of Government as the delegate. And this was, I think, during the pandemic, one of the torrents council members brought up that they wanted to form a regional subcommittee for, with regards to coyotes. There didn't seem to be an appetite, which at the time I thought was a little strange because it sounded, it was a growing problem that knew eventually it was going to come. So that's something I can always suggest about bringing back. I know I was speaking to Rancho's Paulus Verides council member who did say that we can look at their suppression plan, or not suppression plan, but I guess how they deal with it. You have to be very careful, you know, with, with regards to, to them. I guess they're protected species. So you have to make sure you're dealing with it appropriately. But that's something I'm happy to bring up. And I know the staff's working on a better plan with regards to our city. And then I did want to ask our city attorney because I feel like one of the speakers got cut off. And so I think it, it'd be good to get an update with regards to what's considered electioneering, what you can and can't say with regards to this being a public forum and kind of the reason why we can't have certain comments that, you know, be made during the meetings. From what I understood is it's, it's a public forum. And in that case, you can't, you, because we use city funds to broadcast, we can't have certain, I guess, people electioneering on a public forum like this. I just wanted to get your input and just explain why there are certain conversations that can't be had at the podium with regards to elections.
Sure, yes. And you, basically, you have it right. It's, you have a public broadcast of a council meeting where the city's business is being done. Because of this, the council is barred from electioneering during meetings. You can't be talking about whether you're running or not. And so that then makes it unfair for others to be able to actively campaign. It's one thing to come in and raise policy issues and then when your signs, when your mailers are visible to the public, they've heard part of what you've said, totally allowed. It's okay for a member of the public to say, voting is important. Register to vote and please get out in November and vote, totally allowed. But vote for me or I promise to do X, Y, and Z. As you say, ma'am, that's where we get into an area of electioneering. And so we, we try to, we try to put a stop on it because, as I say, the council is completely barred from it. Others, there are some gray areas, but it's better to focus on simply stating policies and then do the campaigning elsewhere.
And I will say, I do know that there's been other years in which there, there has been, our prior city attorney has brought up, you know, there's certain conversations you can't have. So I just thought it'd be helpful to explain why certain conversations can't be had because it's a public forum or the way that we're having this setting. That's all I wanted to say. So with that, again, thank you to everybody that came out, and I will pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. If we could have staff sit down with R J and finalize everything that they need to do, that would be great. And then if we could get more information on how a certain block could get speed bumps or additional stop signs on their block to prevent, you know, the cars from flying down the street. I live in a street where we have several stop signs, but they're still running them, whether we have speed bumps or a stop sign. The cars nowadays are still flying. So if we could get that for Mr. Cruz, that information, maybe he could put together a committee in his block and to request that.
Sounds good. Not a problem.
And then, Michelle, thank you for bringing the information up. Is your, the report you gave us, is that information on the library website?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell us what the website is so we could maybe put it on our website? So, thank you. And with that, that would be all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Pro Tem, Hoffman Gorman.
I just want to say also, thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak with us tonight. Thank you, R J's, for the photographs and letting us see them. I appreciate that. Sam, in regards to your traffic on your street, you said 160th and Freeman. I would like for you to speak to the Sheriff's Department who's sitting back here. And maybe we could up the patrol in that area so that we can get a better picture is what's going on there. And that would be one of the first places, I think, to start as well, is addressing it and trying to figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, we're going to try not to have any discussion from the back and forth from the audience and the diocese.
But that's, that's my idea. The sergeant is back there and a couple of deputies and they can assist. And the librarian, thank you for everything that you're doing for this summer, for the students, and for continually meeting the needs of the city of Longdale residents. We really appreciate that. And I appreciate your ongoing commitment to come out and tell us what is going on. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who came out to speak as well. Michelle, thank you for always keeping us updated on what's going on at the library, all the great programs you have over there for children and adults. I noticed that we also have a program for adults and I appreciate that as well. With the R J's construction, yes, I would, would like to get these issues resolved. I know the staff has been working with the, the operators at R J Construction. But if we can get this resolved, I mean, this is an ongoing issue. I would appreciate if we can get this resolved as quickly as possible. I know you guys are doing whatever you can, but if you can pay attention to that, we appreciate it. But I want to thank both parties for bringing this issue to our attention. Also, we spoke about how to do the, the speed bumps. So thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. And I think that's pretty much, I think that's pretty much it. We did talk about cross, crossing guards, but that was for our last, last meeting. We made a decision on some crossing guards issues. It wasn't a matter of just reducing crossing guards to, to save money. It's, it's about the needs of the community and whether or not you have crossing guards that's actually crossing students as opposed to, you know, grownups or what have you that should be able to cross relatively safe because that's crossing guards primarily for, for children or what have you. Now, if, if we're looking at William Greens, you said William Greens was one of the, one of the, the streets we're looking at. I can't recall if that's the case or not. The only one we recall is if William Green is one of the, is, is the street? No, I mean by William Green School, I mean.
We did take that one off.
Yeah. Okay, so we left the one by William Greens on. But basically, what you have, what you have, because you do have some, in some cases where you have a crossing guard out there and may cross a few people, you know, the, the whole day. And most of those, a lot of times, in some of these cases, could end up being adults, right? And so it's not a great use of the money. But certainly, we have our, our kids, protecting our kids, of course, is our top priority. And some cities don't even have crossing guards, but we think it's a priority that we have crossing guards in our community to protect our kids. So, but we will continue to revisit it anytime we see an uptick in a lot of, you know, crossing. We may need to expand, you know, or what have you. So it's always a work in progress. And with that, I think that's all I have. But thank everyone once again for coming out tonight. So let's move our agenda. We have a couple of items to get to. We're now on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Well, if there's no subtract or additions, I make a motion to accept the consent dollar as written.
And I'll second it.
Okay. There's been a motion that we approve the consent calendar by Kearney and seconded by Torres. Is there any questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on the consent count?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item is amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 23, C D B G budget allocation. Let's have the staff report. Make sure I said that really slowly. Thought you, thought you heard me.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you is an amendment for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, C D B G budget allocation. This was initially brought to you in February 7th of this year. We bring this up to you every year with the money that is given to us by the federal government to be implemented for the C B D G activities, such as senior activities, street improvements, and other, other activities that, that may qualify under the C B D G grant. So the reason we're here before you with this amendment is because due to previous years, projects still being worked on, because usually they last longer than within that fiscal year that they're approved under. If you can see on page two, I put together a chart for you where it explains the pending items to be, to be reviewed by our, our consultant, Michael Baker International. So here, they're only doing administration items. So this is why we're asking for a smaller amount, like the 6,000, 4,000, 2,000, et cetera, on the right-hand side. So in the middle, you'll see the column. It says C D B G budget remaining. So that is from the, the monies where it's coming from. So if you see C B D G administration fiscal year 1920, the budget that is remaining is 137,00669. And we are asking to get some of that monies from that year's budget to be moved over to the 2022, 2023 budget in order to be able to finalize the project. So these are the projects and these are the amounts that we're asking for, for a total of 92,036 dollars, all coming from previous C D B G budgets, just being transferred over to this currently approved budget of 2022, 2023. And that concludes staff report. And staff is available for any questions.
Okay. What was that? Go, go ahead with your question first. So, Madam Pro Tem.
On the page, page two of six, it says 159th from Gravilla to Hawthorne Boulevard. Do you see that? Is there any way we can adjust that? Because 159th at Gravilla, it turns. It doesn't make it out to Hawthorne Boulevard.
Yes.
Unless it means on the other side of the boulevard and continuing on 159.
What page is that? Councilwoman?
What page?
Yes.
After the attachment or the attachment on the second page.
Where, where your table under streets.
Mayor, Council, that, that's the attachment from the previous approval. We're not seeking that. Those are the roads you approved previously. Just a general location. That's the attachment so you know from the previous approval. What we're focused on is the labor compliance component of all these previous years that need to be approved by the council for amending the budgets.
So that was last year's projects?
Well, yes, what you, yeah, it was supposed to come in December, but it looked like it came in February. So this year, we'll make sure we bring you this year's upcoming streets in December. It was a little bit, Jared was a little behind short staff.
So the 92,000 is for labor compliance.
Right, for all these previous years. Yeah, as the roads change, as the mayor.
Street specific, yes.
As the mayor, Pro Tem, has pointed out, they do adjust. In the resolution, the previous attachment, the city manager authorized by the council can make those adjustments based on the public works director's needs. So sometimes when the bids come in, they come in higher than what we previously anticipated. And there was a staffing error. If you recall previous staff report a few months ago from Julian, letting the council know there were some errors in some proposed bids that we received on the previous years. And so that throws off the labor compliance components as well.
3,000 will take this back.
Would cover all of this labor compliance for these, all of these listed in the statement?
Just one, to add one more thing. There are some projects that are on the previous staff report that are not being paid with C D, C D B G funds, but with other grants. However, because they're putting together with the same, they have a little bit of C B D G funds, it all falls under the same, the grant, so they have to be included under C D B G. That's why we had to add those other streets.
So what Ms. Chavez is pointing out too, when you co-mingle those different funds that Julian, you'll see periodically, this fund, Measure M, when you co-mingle with Community Development Block Grant, depends, doesn't matter per lacta and HUD. Once you do that, then you expand the cost of the labor compliance because you're co-mingling those funds. So that's, Julian's mentioned that before. It becomes very complicated. And because this is highly regulated, these federal funds, more so than the other measures and other set aside funds for transportation dollars.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Madam Pro Tem, you, you good? Okay, okay. All right. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I'll make the motion that we approve the amendment to the C D B G budget allocation.
And I'll second what she said.
Motion's been made by, by Torres that we approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2022, C B G, whatever, whatever, budget allocation, and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. We've heard the discussions. Are any more discussions on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on the motion to approve?
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll be pretty brief. The council's noted the numerous communications we've had regarding graffiti. And I just want to let the community know we're addressing it. We're working on it daily. I'll just let everyone know there's two competing local youth gangs, you would say. I'm not going to name them. I'm not going to name them, but they're competing for the interests of this area. And so you've noticed a proliferation of the graffiti all over the city. And unfortunately, the sheriffs are trying to, they've assigned sheriffs detail to, you know, at night to try to catch these folks. We have some businesses assisting, but just so the council's aware, some businesses are reluctant. They're a little scared because of, you know, if they, you know, retaliation and whatnot. But the sheriffs are out there trying to catch them. As I mentioned, I sent you an email today letting you know that three individuals work and it was mentioned by the sheriffs, they picked them up that may be related to all the graffiti we've been seeing all over the city. This past weekend, Willie was off, but we had to sign an extra, two staff members to assist with the graffiti because they went around the whole city and just hit, not just our city, but other cities as well. So just so you're well, well aware of that. The cleanup day we had today, off the right of way, we did address it. We took down the, we posted it first. City attorney's right there, so make sure we posted it. And we let everybody know that we're out there. You know, of course, the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, we're going to come from one week to sixty to ninety days, so we went out there. We got most of the stuff down. Staff contacted me. There was some, maybe some possible hazardous materials at the bottom by the retaining wall and lots of needles, so staff were concerned. So I pulled them off, the rest of the pulling it out. I had to contact Burlington to pick up the rest of the stuff there. So that is, we had to stop most of the tents are down, all that debris that was there, all that stuff's taken down. But some of the stuff by the retaining wall, by Artesia, is still down in there because it's a safety hazard. One thing I was going to mention, a third item, is discussions with the council in the future for some strategic planning. We can all get together and you guys can give me some direction and staff, where you would like to see the city going, economic terms. I've heard comments from the council about branding. I've heard other things about how we're addressing, you know, working together on some of the public works issues, what are some of the big challenges, equipment, more staffing on the weekend, some of these things, you know, sheriffs, where do we want to see the future of the sheriffs, some of the big ticket items. So that's something I want to bring to the council's attention. And then one other thing, Julian's not here today, unfortunately, but as you know, he's put in his resignation, he's going to the city of Lynnwood. And I will, I will be overseeing most of the operations, unfortunately. I do not have my PE, so we're going to have to bring back an item for consideration for the council to consider to add on someone with a professional engineer's license that can sign off on daily things that need to be signed off. And that's it.
That's the one certificate you don't have, is the PE.
Yeah, that's right, Mr. Mayor. I don't have that one.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our city manager. Did you invoice, who owns that property, Metro or?
It's owned by, the right of way is owned by Metro, but it's shared with Burlington Northern Santa Fe. So we contacted them, Mr. Reyes, and they said they'd be out and we have not billed them, we will get the hours. But there is some leftover residual, so hopefully they'll get out there.
But your retirement labor today, or today, did you document that and send, we're going to invoice them for?
Yeah, we are going to document and we are going to send the invoice to Burlington Northern.
Okay, that's it, Rob. Thank you.
Yeah, because that, when you get to Artesia, so at one time I was walking the railroad and I was going to get off in Artesia and go down. Of course, you couldn't because it was, I guess it was an old abandoned, it looked like it's abandoned, you know, encampment, you know, right there with all kinds of nastiness.
That was the area we were cleaning up today.
That's the area, there's no telling what you'll catch going through there.
It went pretty deep. I got a call from staff about one and they asked to be pulled off because of the needles and other hazardous materials in there.
Oh, it was, it was terrible.
The tents are down and services were offered to homeless individuals, which they refused. They went across the tracks.
Very good. Thank the staff for doing that. That's, that's good. That's all for you?
That's all for me.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Suarez.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Counsel, it don't take up our time.
Oh, okay. Really quick, really quick. I would like to congratulate Fairfield Brewery on their one-year anniversary, which was yesterday. Nice event.
We were invited to drink, set drinks.
No, we didn't, I didn't. Anyway, it was, it was, it was a great event for them. Also, on July twenty-fourth, I attended the fifty-ninth Annual Chevron Manhattan Beach Grand Prix. It was from eight AM to two PM. It's a bicycle race. They had seven bicycle race. The best thing was seeing the little kids race. They started at the age of four with their tricycles and they went all the way to eighteen. And just seeing them race, that made my day. And that was all, thank you.
Madam Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, I did one event and that was a meeting with Metro on Tuesday, the nineteenth. More to come on that soon. And I would like to say tomorrow night is our Neighborhood Watch Night Out. And I'd like to see all residents come and enjoy the evening up here at City Hall. And I also have a thank you to officer that works on the weekends, Black, for his assistance this week on a matter. I really appreciated him and his timely response. Thank you.
Thank you. I too attended the Metro meeting along with the Pro Tem, our monthly meeting, bimonthly meeting with Metro. So we still continue to meet with Metro to hold their feet to the fire. And we will continue to work with them on that. Also, I attended the retirement party for Carolyn McCray. She's a Gardena resident, but she's a postal service worker who works in the area. She used to work, I believe, at our station just around this area, probably even Hawthorne as well, for thirty-two years of service to the postal service. And we gave her a little letter congratulating her on behalf of the city of Longdale for serving our community for a postal service worker, thirty-two years. That's pretty good. I said, that's pretty good if you can work for the postal service without going postal for thirty-two years. You know, that's pretty, pretty, pretty good. That's pretty good. So we congratulate her. Let's see, it seemed like I attended one other function, but I don't see it here. Give me one second. All right, maybe I'll bring it up next, next week. So that's it for me. Okay, we do have two closed sessions tonight. One is going to be a public employee performance evaluation. The other is a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us provision of the closed-door sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The performance evaluation is held under Government Code Section 54957B. And again, as you said, sir, that's the city manager. The anticipated litigation is Government Code Section 54956.9D4, in which the city is considering the potential initiation of litigation and therefore the facts constituting that must remain private to protect the city's interest in potentially initiating at some point in the near or midterm future. Thank you, sir.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Okay, it's now a little after seven thirty. And we, we, we have returned from closed session. Going to ask the city attorney to give the report at the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council was briefed on both items. No reportable action was taken though this evening. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's see here. Okay. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, August fifteenth. In these here chambers, it's now nine forty-six, this meeting is adjourned.